Okay, we will call to order the Village Board of Oregon meetings for Monday, November 20th, 2023. Ask the clerk to call a roll.
Kurt Storfer?
Here.
McDaniel?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
And Van Campen?
Here.
And Beshin and Mankie are absent this evening.
Thank you. Item three, approval of November 6th, 2023 Village Board meeting minutes. We're looking for corrections or a motion to approve. Amanda and Lynn? Any other comments? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. Item four, public appearances, comments, and communications. Item four, discussion, possible action. A, public comment. This part of the agenda allows members of the public to provide information to the village board, including items both on and off the agenda. Fifteen minutes will be provided for this item with a three-minute maximum per speaker. Anyone here for public comments? Seeing none, thank you. B, application for Class A beer and Class A liquor alcohol beverage license for QuickTrip Incorporated at 951 Janesville Street. So, number one, I'll open the public hearing. I'll ask if there are any staff comments on this.
I don't have any comments other than what's in the packet.
Okay.
Answer any questions if anybody has anything.
Any comments or questions from the petitioner? Okay, no? Aren't we all? I thought to ask, just confirm your, your application reads December 4th. Is that the date you're still comfortable with?
So, December 4th is the day that we would start receiving shipments into the location.
Okay.
And then we will give to the public on the seventh.
Okay.
For deliveries, we have to have it set by night.
Right. Okay, great. Any comments from the public? None? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Item two, discussion, possible action by the village board on this item, and that is to approve the applications. So, we're looking for a motion to approve. Amanda?
Well, yeah, motion to approve and then discussion.
All right, and Tom second. Amanda, go ahead, please.
Yeah, sorry, I just had a few questions for the QuickTrip people, if you don't mind.
Could you come up, please?
Yeah.
Sure.
Names are good.
Name and address for the record, please.
I am Alex Abel, and I'm the district leader for the area.
Okay.
I'm Tanya Fitzsimons. I'm the store leader of the store.
And the agent.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cool. So, these are just kind of some quick things, just because the, you're adding on the Class A intoxicating liquor license, which none of the other QuickTrips currently have. So, I was just wondering, do you guys have a system where, like, if you scan something that's age restricted, it prompts for checking an ID?
Yes, it does.
Excellent. Love to hear that. And then, do you have a way of monitoring? How are you going to kind of monitor that area? I know you have, like, a beer cave and then, yeah, where's, how does that work?
So, we have camera systems in our, in our locations, especially in our new locations. It's, there's probably four that exist in that beer cave itself, plus in front of the doors. And in most of our locations, there's actually a TV screen that's right behind the registers for coworkers to be able to monitor, lock the doors if need be, if we see theft or people of underage trying to steal that, so they can lock the doors and try to stop that as well, or call the police if necessary.
Okay, excellent. And then, do you plan to advertise any sales on liquor or anything like that?
Not, not, no. Typically, they'll put ads on, in the flyer for beer, but I don't think we typically advertise for liquor specifically.
Okay, good to hear. And then, what was the last thing? Oh, I know. This is the, the main thing that I was concerned about. Are you selling, like, the little airline bottles, they're called, those little things of alcohol?
If we, if we did, they would be sold behind their cash register. We, I mean, for theft reasons for us. I mean, that's typically where those are stored. In most of our liquor stores that we do have, they do sell that behind the cash register, yes.
Okay. Yeah, I don't, I don't know what the research is on those. I know in our ordinances, we currently ban single-serving fermented malt beverages at places that sell gas, and the reason being, people tend to buy one and drink it on the way home, and we don't want that. So, I, I don't know if, if there's something that we might consider as board in the future, you know, doing something similar, but I'd, I'd want to see some research on that. But, I mean, as long as you're amenable to
Oh, absolutely.
that potential change. I mean, I don't object on the face to you guys selling intoxicated liquor. I know a lot of QuickTrips do in the state, so. And we, we've already verified, right, that it's over 1,056 feet away from J.L. Richards, because that's the closest place. Okay, cool. That's all the questions I have.
Actually, the closest place is their old store.
Technically, yes. That is true. That's true. Well, not for, not for the intoxicated liquor, but the, the fermented malt beverages, right?
Class As have the limitations.
All of them. Oh, okay, got it. Okay, but they'll, that'll be closing, so that won't be the issue. Okay.
Right, right.
Good. That's all I had. Sounds good to me.
Awesome. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Okay, so, just to clarify, the, the motion is per the language in the agenda, which is rather lengthy, and I won't read, but Kenny gave me the okay to do that. So, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Posed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you for answering my questions. I appreciate it.
Feel free if you have any other questions to reach out.
Absolutely.
Item six, consent agenda, rec, motion to recommend.
Five.
Pardon me?
Approval of vouchers.
Oh, the vouchers. I chronically have problems with vouchers. Okay, thank you. Item five, approval of vouchers in the amount of $1,693,125.91. Looking for a motion to approve. Lynn and Amanda? Questions, comments? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Kurt Storfer?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
McDaniel?
Yes.
And Van Campen?
Yes, and thank you to Jeff for keeping me honest. Item six, consent agenda. Staff recommendation, motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented. Looking for a motion to approve. Amanda, Tom? Questions, comments on these items, A through E?
I have a question on six, on the Hy-Vee and the reorganization. Some of it follows what Amanda was talking about. Is there a camera? There's, they moving from an area that they used to be able to observe from the cash registers to an aisle? I'll location, I don't know if, if that was taken into consideration, or if the domain, the area there increased or changed. Does anyone know?
They didn't, they did not comment to me that they moved any cameras of any sorts.
I did speak to the manager, Lynn, today, and he told me that the squared footage, actual square footage is not changing, just the locations. I cannot speak to the cameras.
And that's actually what I was going to say, too. So, thanks for saying that.
Those were my questions, too, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. We have a motion, a second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. Thank you. Item seven, reports of committees, none. Item eight, unfinished business. Items for discussion and/or possible action. A, 2024 municipal budget. I'll open the public hearing and ask first if there are any comments from staff. No? What's up, you?
I'm good.
Okay. Okay, then we'll open, we'll ask, are there any public comments on the municipal budget? Seeing none, close the public hearing. Item 82, resolution number 23-44, adoption of the 2024 municipal budget. Staff recommendation, motion to approve as presented. Amanda and Tom? Comments, please? Amanda?
I just wanted to comment on the Oregon Observer article draft. I thought it was a, a well-timed piece, and I think it's something that, that we should look at, how else we can get that message out besides just the Observer, so.
Lynn?
Yeah, I, I wanted to just say thanks, Martin, for putting this all together, and to staff for keeping your budgets in line with things that we can afford. Much appreciated. And I like the article. My only concern is it might be a bit long. I think it's like 1,200 words or something, so we may have to cut it down a little, but it's got good information, so.
Absolutely.
I'm going to start there, and if they want to pare it back, I'll pare it back a little.
That's fair. Okay, that's it.
Okay, other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Posed, motion carries. Thank you. Item B, resolution number 23-45, adopting the 2024 employee wage schedule and setting 2024 wages for current employees. Recommendation, motion to approve as presented. Amanda and Tom? Questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. Item 8C, resolution number 23-46, adopting sewer service charges effective December 29th, 2023. Recommended motion to approve as presented. Tom and Amanda? Comments, questions? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. Thank you. Item 8D, resolution number 23-47, amending the village's organizational chart to incorporate changes made in the 2024 budget. Recommendation, motion to approve as presented. Lynn? And Amanda? Comments, questions?
A lot of, a lot of work.
Yes.
Thank you for doing that.
Yes.
It's not an easy task to have people do all the things that they're responsible for, so this will be helpful going forward.
Other comments, questions? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. Item nine, new business items for discussion or possible action. A, village hall community reservation agreement as detailed in your packet. Looking for a motion to approve as presented. Amanda? And Tom? I did have one question, and that is, are we allowing people to reserve their room during board meetings? Is that something we're going to avoid or not worry about, or?
I think we did once, just out of complete happenstance, and, I mean, when they were moving, the furniture was a little loud, but otherwise, it actually worked out well, because then, you know, everything's already open, and we didn't have to make special arrangements. But I'm not opposed to it. I think it depends on what it is.
I'm just wondering about the, the fact that we, we may have a closed session, and if that would be communicated back and forth. We could accidentally have that scheduled enough so we don't have anywhere to go.
Internally, I think we, we can work that out.
I think so, too.
Because we, we, we can look at everything that's rented for the day.
Okay.
And just maybe Mondays can be, there's not a whole lot of parties on Mondays, so.
Well, you know, depends on your lifestyle, I guess. Okay, thank you for commenting on that.
I had a couple of questions. So, I guess, how will, so will they fill the form out first and deliver it, and that's when they make the request, or where they make the request and then receive the form to fill out?
Either or.
Either or. Will it be online, or?
It's, the form will be online, yep. So, if they want to print it off, bring it in. But sometimes, nine times out of ten, they call to check availability first, and then the form is provided.
Then I had a question on the, page 349 of the packet, on the arrival and departure procedures form. There's no place for the village employee to say, and there is a scuff on the floor, there is marks around, or, or some, right now, it's, it's pristine, I realize that, but...
Right. No, that's a very good point. Wow. Yeah, I'm sure we could add a little something.
Are you just concerned that there'd be kind of a process for, sorry?
No, go ahead, yeah.
Like, what's our expectation on, here's what it is before and after, or this is our checklist, and if you don't meet these ten requirements, you don't get your deposit back?
Well, and this is just saying that everything's in working order, and all services are, are in good shape. An outlet might not be working, or, or something could be going on that they were going to fix at another time, that they don't want to have, I guess, it'd be similar to when you rent an apartment, you go through and you say, oh, no, here's the things that, that are in change.
You, you want some kind of language on that first part that just gives the option for the employee to check it's not in good condition and list?
Yeah, see attached or something.
Comments.
Deviations attached or something. That, that would be, I'm, I'm just thinking that for the employee, doesn't want to certify that the room is in pristine condition, whether it might not.
Right. Yeah, we can make that adjustment.
Are you good approving this tonight and just letting staff make that addition to the, to the agreement?
Perfect.
Do you need that as part of the motion?
We can include that in the.
So, who made the motion again?
Peterson.
You and...
I can never remember. We do so many of these.
I think you and Tom.
So, so I'll amend my motion to say, to approve the, the form with staff to add comment section for the employee section.
Checklist.
The checklist, if there's something wrong.
I'm good with that.
Okay, so we, first, we need to vote on the amendment. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Posed, motion carries. Vote on the main motion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Posed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item nine B, Public Works Department organizational plan, including current and plan organizational charts, responsibilities, and job descriptions. First, we're looking for getting motion on the table here. Lynn? Amanda, I just want to comment, this is, looks like a substantial amount of work, and I congratulate you on wading through it, and I'm sure Jeff might have a comment or two.
Yeah, so Lauren and I have been working on this for the last couple of months. As any department, and, I mean, I was just, just, weren't we just notified recently that the, the anticipated or the projected population right now is over 1,200?
12,000.
Or 12,000, yes. We do know, yes, it is, but just over 12,000.
It's like 11,940 or something.
Yeah. And I just saw it moving back over the weekend, so. But, yeah, and, and, you know, as we've grown, it's just nice to look at your department every once in a while, look at the structure that you have. And as we've kind of changed structure in the last couple of years, it's just been a learning curve for all of us as we've just, you know, working out responsibilities, working out, you know, a structure as well as, as we continue to grow. And you'll find that as we go through here, you know, we've added some positions, and so, first thing we did was just kind of take a look at, where's our current organizational chart? And it's shown there in that, the one page here. There we go. I'll probably zip back and forth a little bit, but, and, you know, what you can kind of see this is, you know, with these new positions that we've created, and just in the last, well, through this budget, the water utility and sewer collections manager, the wastewater utility manager, and then how we're kind of handling Public Works under street superintendent, but also as we had the retirement of Billy a couple of weeks ago, now that we're out to, we're looking for someone, if someone's out there, as a parks manager, and then building that parks department. And you'll see as we go into our, our future organizational chart, how we elevate. We, we look at some additional hires as we continue to grow, namely, water utility operator, a second utility technician, this is the individuals that are out working to clean the sewers and operate our big expensive truck, public works crew, and then mechanic, additional hopefully in that 28, 30 timeframe. But then, how we've moved this up to a park superintendent position, and adding that structure, and then starting to add those parks, crew persons. Now, we're still going to operate, and I can't stress this enough, we're one, we're one Public Works department. And so, that means that we're kind of all on duty all the time to each other as needed. And I think our staff liked that, most, most of the staff liked that to a certain extent, because it's, gives you variety, but it also means that we are able to react to situations. And when we have a water main break, like 20 minutes before the annual employee appreciation lunch, people can react, and unfortunately, they, they did get some lunch, but, but it's, it's just one of those things. But as we add these parks crew people, the, the thought is always, what are they going to do in the winter? Well, they become snowplow operators, and they help our crew person, you know, they, they do a lot of tasks that are, are year-round. And then, we look at probably adding an additional LTE in 2026. One of the other things, and, and this is, you know, this is obviously a very fluid document as far as this future organizational chart, because we continue to look at this every year of where our needs are, where our, where the budget is, you know, and it also depends on staffing, and as staffing changes as well. One of the things that, what, one of the things that we also looked at was really sitting down and defining all the different tasks associated with public works, which, when you start looking at it, is, is pretty wide, when we look at the, what we're spread across, both in the utilities, the wastewater sanitary, the water system, development work, and then we call miscellaneous public works, and really just making sure that we are kind of understanding where those responsibilities are, and who would be the primary or secondary person associated with that, whether we're, as we now have these utility managers, we have Lauren and I's position, we have the street superintendent position, as well as working with engineering consultants and our zoning administrator, Elise. And so, really just trying to, this is very much a tool, again, just to help make sure that everyone understands their roles and responsibilities. And then, lastly, you know, everybody's favorite thing is to go through job descriptions. You know, it's like trying to read the phone book sometimes, but it is important that one of the things that we've added with the structure is, are some very important kind of roles, especially in like our utilities, with utility operators, one, two, and three, our, our crew person, one, two, and three, our parks crew person, one, two, and three, although we only think have just one parks crew person right now. But those are important roles that our staff can see advancement. If someone comes to us right out of high school, and they have some great work ethics and stuff, they can start off as a, a crew person one, and we have steps that allow that person, as they maybe earn their CDL license, as they start to learn how to operate all the equipment, as they gain responsibility and trust from others, including supervisors and, and the fellow coworkers, really allows them then to be able to move on to those other levels. The other thing is, and Peggy's not here tonight, but she will admit, and, and we all admit, that, you know, having everything in a single format is kind of one of those challenges, because, you know, we've been kind of reactionary, and as we've hired, and wanted to bring some stuff up to the new format. And through this process, we're able to do that with, there's almost, I think there's 21 job descriptions here. And I hope you read through every single one of them. I'll look for any comments, but, no, I think this is, just like anything, any of these documents, they'll be amended over time, and we'll be brought, bring in individual ones back before you, but this is a chance to get us all on the same format, matching the JDQs that we went through a few years ago with Carlson Detman. And it's just a, it's part of continuing to build our department and kind of reinforce what we do and who does it.
Okay, thank you, Jeff.
You're welcome.
Thank you both, Jeff and Lauren, for, I'm sure, as I said, a substantially large project. Bully, pardon?
Thank you.
Lynn, please.
I have just a couple of questions. You have probably explained this to us a couple of times, and it's just not sinking into me. The parks superintendent role is going to be this next year? That's what we've done with Billy's role, we're kind of hiring for a higher level?
Right. We're hiring that as what we're calling as a parks manager.
Okay.
And so, that would be more like what we've kind of done with Don and Cal in the utility manager roles. Not really a superintendent role as of yet, because sometimes it's hard to be a superintendent if you don't have anyone below you other than, say, the seasonal LTEs.
Right.
Our hope is to be able to hire a parks manager, be able to allow them to work into the role of a superintendent over, we think, probably three to five years.
Okay.
Depending on level of experience and expertise, and how, you know, how our, our program, the parks program grows.
Okay. So, when I'm looking at the future organizational chart, there is no time, there's no year on that internal promotion to the parks superintendent, and that's just because we're not sure how that will play out, depending on who
Correct.
goes to parks manager. So, if I'm looking at this, I guess maybe I should look at the current one, the parks manager, okay, I, I'm getting it now.
Yes.
Thank you.
Parks manager is, is under our street superintendent, which is how we've kind of operated with Billy, but Billy was... But Billy was, Billy was not, Billy was a Parks Crew Person. Very good, but we're looking for someone like more turf management background, fertilizing knowledge, herbicide treatments, all, all these type of things, and then also irrigation systems, field maintenance, that type of thing.
Great, my only other comment is that, should we get to that Parks Superintendent? I think it would be great to see something as a suggestion in that job description to come to the Parks Board meeting.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
It'd be nice to have more interaction
Absolutely.
from the Park Board to somebody who is managing those parks. I mean, you guys provide great information, it's just.
They would be the primary person coming to the Park Board meeting.
That'd be awesome.
We used to have Gary Dish, who was the Assistant Director before Lauren, come to all the Park Board meetings. And, but this would be much more of an active role that would attend those, because, especially as a Superintendent would be a full salaried position as well.
Great, thank you.
So now I have a clarification.
Sorry.
So what we're, the organizational chart, we're, that the motion is on and that we're looking to approve is on three fifty-five? Which is where there's a Park Manager.
Correct.
And you'll come back at a later time with an amendment to, if, when you want to make that a Park Superintendent, that would be a future.
Really what we're asking to approve tonight is just the organization chart, and then approve the job descriptions so that we can then let those go, take those from draft to, that's where they are today unless we have to amend them individually in the future.
And the other, but the other chart was just for informational purposes that you are thinking about the future.
Right, it's not committing you to hire all these people yet.
Is that what you were asking?
If we asked the Senior Senator to do this, they would have a similar chart. Police Department would have a similar chart, and we'd all have, you know, our, this is our Christmas wish list, I think.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions or comments?
Just one, so it is the organization chart and the job descriptions, it's one motion, we don't have to do that as two separate things?
That's correct, yeah, but it's all.
Do you want to read it in them?
Sure, Public Works Department Organizational Plan, including current and planned organizational charts, responsibilities, and job descriptions. And we have a motion.
I do not have a motion.
Sorry, I've got ahead of myself.
I would make that motion.
Tom and Amanda, further comments? Hearing that, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Most, motion carries, thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Your input. Item nine C, resignation of Derek Beal from Village Board and process to fill trustee vacancy. Just for the record, Village Trustee Derek Beal, Beal submitted his resignation to the Village Board on Sunday, November twelfth. The vacant office has an unexpired term that will be up for election in twenty twenty-five. I think you all, all would join me in thanking Derek for his service to the Board, he was a thoughtful voice, will, will be missed. Going ahead, we can evaluate and perhaps decide how we're going to fill that seat. Given that we are short a few people tonight, I wonder if we want to put this off, or we want to go ahead and then make some decision as to process, not, we wouldn't be able to appoint someone tonight, but.
Is there an option at all to, to fill the position until the next regular election?
I had some discussions about that today with Martin, and it wasn't ideal.
There are some spe- there, that is allowable, it would be a special election, and I pulled the statutes on the special elections today and read that. I do think that there's probably some unbudgeted costs that would be involved with that. We'll have to open up the nomination paper period, and there's some timelines that we'll have to follow with the statutes. But that, it's an option.
Martin, do you have anything further?
Yeah, I mean, the special election's an option, like Candy said, even though it's happening at the same time our normal elections happening, it kind of creates some parallel processes for costs and noticing, and, for example, if you wanted to be a candidate, you would, you could potentially actually file candidacy for both spots. So there might be some confusion on, why am I voting for four people that need to pick three under the regular election? And then now there's another election that's for Village Trustee that
For two years.
For a year, what's that about? So there may be some confusion there, and just some overall creation of work involved, but it is possible, and it's doable.
And I wasn't clear, Martin explained it to me and I wasn't clear, so I thought I would just reiterate that. So on the ballot, you would have two different places where someone would choose a trustee.
Because one would be a one-year term.
Yeah. Amanda, please.
Oh, what, what kind of costs are we talking about, is it a, do you think a lot, a little, I mean?
I mean, when you factor in staff time, I think it could, I think it could be quite a bit, honestly. But I've never been through a special election before, so I could tell you after. But, but, yeah, I, I, I think they would be more than substantial. I don't know how to define substantial, but.
No, that, that's fair. I, I guess in light of that, you know, I, our budget's sort of tight, as we all know. And if it ended up being ten thousand or something, or, or in that neighborhood, I mean, I don't know, I, I know that the public likes to elect their representatives, and, and people may question why we're doing this, but it's not without precedent that we, that we appoint people to, and, you know, I, I guess I'm just, I would say at this point, I'm for appointing, just because I feel like it's, it's quicker, and we can fill the seat for, just for a year, and it saves us money.
Uh, Candy has a comment?
I would also like to just like piggyback off of what Martin said, too, is, so if we have, if we have somebody, if we have no one run for that specific seat, that's, that's potential, we could have nobody run for that. So then we would have to count all write-ins for that seat. And also, I think a primary would be triggered, according to what I've read, if three people ran for that seat. So keep that in mind, too.
And we don't know if there'll be a primary.
And we don't know, yeah, we don't know yet.
For, because of another race triggering it, just potentially we may not have a primary.
Lynn.
So I agree with Amanda's, everyone's points. I think that, you know, budget-wise, I think it's important to be responsible here. And as a person who is filling a vacancy for almost a year, it's, I'm not unheard of. I also think, maybe I'm biased, but I think that this board makes good decisions and could go through that appointment process again, hopefully making a solid decision, and that we answer for those decisions. So for those who are running, there is some accountability held that, should we nominate somebody, that is a decision that's on the record on our name as well. So I would be, I would be in favor of the same process that put me here, which is the application and the interview, should, if you will, we didn't really interview. So just the description process and then selection.
Be option three on the memo.
Thank you, option three is a much more concise way to say what I mean.
Okay, so it sounds like we're gonna go ahead and proceed with making decisions tonight, is that accurate?
Would we be then making, have, having, how long do we give them to, to submit?
My question is, are we going to, as I suggested at the outset, we may want to wait till the full board is here to make this decision, but I'm comfortable either way, I'm just making that. Amanda.
And just to point out, if, if we were to make a motion for number three, and if it were to pass with the four of us, there's only two members missing, so it would pass regardless, so maybe we kind of see how it goes.
Okay, that's fine, so it sounded like Lynn made a motion to approve, pardon me, item three. Okay, do we have a second? Amanda? Further discussion? Tom, Martin?
Yeah, quick, so, does that mean you want us to just move ahead as we did previously? Or are there details of that that you want to know about, or?
I would assume just as, as though we did last time.
Put it out there for the same, roughly the same amount of time that was done last time.
I think it was three weeks, three or four weeks, but I can look that all up.
Yeah, no more than three, I would hope that.
Do we want to do that over holidays coming up, or that's, that's the only thing is timing then?
Do you want us to bring back a suggestion at next meeting?
I mean, I, I guess from, from my perspective, we could do two things, we could, you could just approve what you're about to approve, and we'll just operate it as similarly, with the same amounts of time and deadlines and things, and schedule interviews before the Board, how we did previously. Or if there, if you want to dig into those details, then you would, we should come back and discuss those details.
Lynn.
For me, it depends on the application, because when Tom and I applied, there were additional questions that the Board had decided based on an Oregon Observer series of questions. And that made a lot more information to be reviewed. So I guess maybe I am asking to back up a little, are we simply going with the original application, which is like one question? I think the question is like, why do you want to be on the Board? Or are we including the other additional questions that were?
It's your motion, so.
Can I make a suggestion? That we first, let's, let's say, let's approve three, and then we could make another motion as if we want to talk about the questions. Are we at least agreed on that fact that we'll have an open recruitment process to solicit people, and the Board will appoint someone?
I'm fine with that, I guess my, would that include the clarification of, of when would we expect applications then?
We can do that in another motion, I'm just saying, like, let's, let's just commit to doing this, and then have another discussion with another motion, just to be.
Okay, so we have a motion, and I think a second for, just choose item three.
Um, yes, McDaniel and Peterson.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm looking up when we did it last time.
So we can vote on motion, unless you have other comments? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Most, motion carries, it sounds like we have more business, go ahead, Amanda.
So yeah, I was just gonna say then, like, with regard to the questions, do we want to see that at the next Board meeting? Review what we previously asked candidates and, and modify the questions that we put out there at, at a future meeting? Because I don't know what the questions are off the top of my head, and I don't know that we want to do it at this meeting, it wasn't on the agenda.
Tom and Lynn, what, what did you think of the questions that we used last time? Off the top of your head?
Well, my, my rec, my vague recollection was after saying why I wanted to be on the Village Board, that a lot of it was reiterated, reiterated of what I had already said in the first question. I'm sort of saying the same thing, different ways, multiple times.
Well, it, it does sound like maybe we should review.
Yeah, my, I know for a fact there's a question about the Main Street lot, because that was
Right.
a big issue, which is not, no longer really relevant. So I do think that reviewing, but I also think that maybe that is something that the larger Board would want to discuss, because now we're talking about how each of us make decisions, and those two voices may have points that they want to bring up, or additional questions, or things like that. So if I'm, should we wait until future agenda items, and we'll, we'll put that on a few, oh, no.
I think you can say, I think you can just tell, tell us under this item that you want to put that on the next agenda.
We'll just, yeah, review that decision-making process.
Would we want to start with, at least have the versions that we used the last time as our starting point?
Sure.
Sure.
That makes sense.
Put it in the packet and review.
So that'd be at the meeting on the fourth.
Yes. And we could talk about timeline then, too, and all these other things.
Yeah, it looks like under the May twenty-second packet, there's a memo from me that talks about the process that we went through, and then all the procedures that we, the Board had decided on, and then, yeah, there's the questionnaires are in there as well. So we can, we'll just compile all that information, so you guys can have it at the next meeting.
Pull that up? No, I, if, if we're gonna discuss it at the next meeting, we might as well just dive in then, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so I think we're done with this item. Thank you. Item ten, Report of Village Officers, Department Heads and Consultants. This is for information only, no action by the Village Board will be taken. The reports are in the meeting packet, versus the Village Administrator Report.
Are you feeling better? Your family good?
I'm sitting next to him.
I know.
I hope so, should be good for a couple of weeks.
Yeah.
Okay, item B, Director of Finance, Report Building Permits Impact Fees and Connection Fees Collected Ending October twenty twenty-three. Any questions or comments for Elisa?
It's, it's worth noting that our permit numbers are down, but the total value of the construction is, is up, so that's good. That's a, that's better than the other way around.
What else, okay, item C, item C, Dane County Municipal Street Improvement Program Awards thirty-two thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars and nine cents grant for Village of Oregon Dewey Street Project and forwarded Oak Street Project for statewide funding opportunity. Jeff? Or Lynn?
Yeah, both Lauren and I, I mean, I, Lauren will admit that Dewey's is kind of one of those streets that I'm always bugging her about to say, hey, we need to do Dewey, and, because it, it does need some work. This is a program that they give a pot of money every two years, and it gets divvied up amongst communities. We did not make the last cut because we had received money the previous time. So it's just one of those things that it's a nice, I think it's thirty, somewhat thirty-two thousand, something like that. Yeah, and change, so it's a, a nice, oh, you've got two extra cents, they gave us two extra cents more than everybody else. We have that going for us.
I know you put that to good use.
Right, right, exactly, and then you want to talk about forwarding on the Borough Project, that's, that's, that's a much bigger ask for funds.
Yeah, so it's, it's actually Oak Street, and it is a project that's been kind of looming for a couple of years now. So it is scheduled to go in twenty twenty-five, right immediately before the wastewater treatment plant upgrades, because it solves a number of outstanding issues. One is that it reroutes a lot of sanitary sewer that currently exists there and is in not great condition. A lot of it is asbestos cement pipe, so that should probably tell you what the vintage of that pipe is. It's also not designed very well, so this project will include a lot of that. It also includes a tremendous amount of storm sewer in that Oak Street corridor there, right along J.C. Park, to start to pick up a lot of water that does collect there and doesn't really have anywhere to go, especially during big events. So this is one that we've been, it's expensive, and we've been looking to possibly find some funding opportunities for it. And so we did submit it to this MSIP program, the discretionary and the supplemental funds. So these are bigger funds that are held at the state level, and they make that decision, their committees at that state level make the decision who receives that funding. Dane County does put together their criteria and ranking for projects that are submitted. They will be the first to tell you that sometimes the state considers that, sometimes they don't. But they do look at all the applications that they get statewide within. But they do look at all the applications that they get statewide within bins of populations and try to distribute things fairly. So this is for much bigger projects. It's not a thirty-two thousand dollar ask. It's much higher, closer to, I think, seven to eight hundred thousand is what we asked for. Um, and and we will see what happens. So there are a lot of really good projects in and uh the competition is stiff, but but we'll see.
Thank you, Lauren. Lynn?
I have a question about the Dewey Street um award. Does this change the, cause Dewey Street's in R C I P. I was looking it up today. It's a little, so this money would be a little over half or about half of what we've projected that to be. Am I correct?
That's just for the design.
Okay, great. That makes more sense. Um, it, but is that gonna shift timeline? How how does this work? Do we take that pool of money and we just wait until we're ready to do that project? Does that allow us to shift that forward a bit?
Um, no, with with this, this money, um, this is the earliest you can use it. Um, typically is how it's been in the past, uh, cause sometimes projects get delayed a year or a couple of years. Um, and but no, typically what happens is, once a project is complete, we will submit the application to Dane County uh with the supporting information, and then they cut us a check back.
Okay.
After we've done with construction and pretty much paid all the bills and everything, but it's nice to get money back. It's a, yeah, it's like Menards. Get eleven percent back.
Not quite eleven percent.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, item eleven, announcements and miscellaneous business. A announcements, comments, communications, updating meetings and events and miscellaneous business. Village Board members will provide brief statements, but no discussion or action of the body shall occur. No one? Oh, Lisa, please.
I just want to clarify on the um, on the building permits, when you talked about the value. I debated on whether or not to put this in there. Twelve million of that is for the library, so it's not assessed value that's taxable. So, yeah, just so that you're aware of that.
Good to know.
Thank you for that. Anyone else? Okay. Eleven eighty-one, uh Pictures with Santa, hosted by the Oregon Police Department and Oregon High School Rotary Interact Club on Sunday, December tenth, from twelve to three P M at the Oregon Police Department, three eighty-three Park Street. Special guest, Oregon Police K nine Archie and Santa Helpers. This is a free event. Giving enough emphasis there? Okay, eleven B, future agenda items. Uh, this item gives village board members the opportunity to place topic on a future agenda for discussion of possible action. Anyone? Hearing none. Item twelve, closed session business, discussion and or possible action under Wisconsin Statutes nineteen point eight five, sub one. So be deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investment of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Attendance is limited to the village board and its discretion, any necessary staff, other officers, and other individuals whose presence is necessary for the business at hand. Looking for a motion to move into closed session? Amanda and Lynn, this is a roll call vote.
Kurt Storfer?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
And Campan?
Yes.
And McDaniel?
Yes.
We are now in closed session. Thank you all very much.